All right, we're streaming.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I know this is a little different from what we've used to, but I'm glad that everybody's doing well. And at this time, I would like to call the Thursday, April 23rd, 2020, Virtual Regular Monthly Meeting of the Portsmouth School Board to Order. At this time, I would like for you to bow your heads for a moment of silence. And if you will remember the first responders and those that are affected by this virus, that would be great. Amen. Thank you. I didn't need that. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you are in a position that you can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, you can't, don't worry about it. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship. At this time, I'll ask Ms. Jameson if she will please call the roll.
She needs to be unmuted.
Ms. Jameson?
She's not. She's, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Roll call, roll call vote, please.
Okay, Ms. Allen?
Present.
Ms. Atkinson? Mr. Barnes? Mr. Barnes? Can you hear me? I can't hear him.
Oh, here. I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Okay, Mrs. Hines?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Present.
Reverend Patillo? Mrs. Schumake?
Present.
Mrs. Williams? Mrs. Williams?
She's on mute.
Present.
Mr. Parent?
Present.
All members are present.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is the approval of the agenda for April 23rd. You have seen a copy of the agenda. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
I don't know who made the motion.
Who made the motion?
Angela Allen made the motion. Ms. Williams made the second.
All right. Do we have any discussion regarding the agenda?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is there any way that we could add a fiscal year 20 update to this, to this agenda for the, for a discussion of a 2020 fiscal year budget impact that we need to discuss that may impact our spending and our budgetary line for this, for the, between now and June 30?
Mr. Carroll, would that fall under the, would that fall under the rules of the electronic meeting?
I believe it would if it's to express budgetary things due to the virus and lack of budget from the, from the state. I saw an email about that a day or so ago. So I think it would qualify under the order of the AG.
All right. So that will be 4.3 would be the discussion of the...
Fiscal year 2020 budget?
Yeah. Okay.
Do I need to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
It needs to be amended.
I move that we approve the amended agenda adding a 4.3 fiscal year 2020 budget item.
Somebody made, she made the motion. I heard Ms. Williams second it.
Yes.
Any discussion regarding the amendment? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo? Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, at this time, a roll call vote concerning the consideration of the annual Special Education Plan and Part B flow-through for the 2021 school year. You've had an opportunity to review that. And I believe that Pamela Battle-Harty is here to present that.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon to my parent, members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. I'm here this afternoon to present the Annual Special Education Plan for 202021 on behalf of the All Public Special Education and Related Services. This plan outlines a formal agreement between the local school board and the Virginia Department of Education regarding provisions of special education and related services for children with disabilities. All federal monies allocated in the annual plan solely benefit students with disabilities. On March 10th, 2020, the Portsmouth Special Education Advisory Committee, known as the CAC Committee, met and approved the plan in accordance to VDOE's regulations. You have received a copy of the annual plan, applications, or summaries from both Grant 611 and Grant 619. Grant 611 funds school age students with disabilities from K or grades K through 12 in the amount of $3,551,565. Grant 619 funds preschoolers with disabilities in the amount of As you note in the summary sheet, majority of the grant is used for salaries and benefits. The next largest amount is used for contracted services. And those contracted services can include hearing equipment, OT, orientation mobility, independent evaluations. There's just a plethora of services that we contract out. This plan is due to VDOE by February May 8th, and I thank you so much for your time and consideration.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion?
Second.
And there's second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
With regards to this, this is grant money. As moving forward here, is this also tied to the issues that we've had in the past with regards to grants?
Because to what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last.
Since this is tied to grant money, are we, is there a possibility that we run into the same issues that we have with regards to grants coming to us from the other governing body?
Let me, let me take that one. What we will do, this is for the FY 2021 budget. So as soon as we get that budget allocation, we've obviously included an estimate in the budget that you guys, your proposed budget. But once we get the actual amount, we will go back to the city and true up. We'll put them on a resolution just like we have been with grant funding, where if there's any true ups, up or down, we will take care of that and get it appropriated from the city side. So we shouldn't have any problem in using this month.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, this is roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Hey, Dr. Karmari, how are you? He's probably...
I'm doing well, sir. Thank you for asking. How are y'all?
I'm doing great. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of the 2021 instructional calendar. And I'm going to ask Mr. Carroll, there's been some discussion concerning the start of school. And I'm going to ask Mr. Carroll if he would address, address that. Ms. Jameson wants to say something. Oh, I'm sorry.
You skipped over the signature.
His signature?
Signatures are next. 4.1. Authorization of signature.
Oh, 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 oh. You're right. Sorry. I'm sorry. We'll back up to 4.1. I went all the way down to the next one. Consideration, Authorization of Signatures of the Absence of the Superintendent. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Ms. Williams, approve.
Second.
And who seconded it?
Hines.
All right. Any discussions regarding the, the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
All right. Check that off. Well, the next item that I brought up is 4.2, Consideration of the Instructional Calendar. And I'll ask Mr. Carroll if he would address this, address this item. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the school board, you may have seen some, some news about other jurisdictions considering a change in their instructional calendar in 2021 due to the first day of school falling in the Jewish holiday of Rosh Hashanah. Rosh Hashanah is a devout Jewish holiday. It begins based on my review of an online calendar on Monday, September 6th, and would end the evening of Wednesday, September 8th. I've taken a look at, you know, what, if anything, can be done to accommodate that. We'll report that, obviously, there are issues of separation of church and state with public schools and religious exercise. And just by way of background, the Establishment Clause of the Constitution would prohibit a school from closing solely for purposes of observing a particular religious holiday. That's pretty black letter constitutional law. Public schools, however, do have the ability to consider closing for secular related reasons. Though if a particular school division were to expect a significant number of student or teacher or non-teaching employee absentees as a result of a particular holiday over another, then consideration of closing for those reasons would be appropriate without stepping on any Establishment Clause issues. And additionally, closing a public school, to the extent this is a question of yours, for a federally recognized holiday, you know, for instance, there are, there are other religious holidays that are also federal holidays. And of course, closure in those times is appropriate. So because Rosh Hashanah is not one of the enumerated federal holidays where, you know, banks are closed, mail service suspended, and things like that, there would need to be a secular reason for not being the school year on the, either the intended day, if it's going to be September, August 7th, as normally is. And so those are, that's kind of the parameters of what we're dealing with, with that issue. The other school system that was at the news, I don't believe they've considered this issue just yet. I know they had their calendar in place and then, and then took it off, out of place to consider later. So that's kind of the framework we're dealing with.
I remember in previous boards that this has happened. And teachers and students had, had the opportunity to opt out, and they were not penalized for missing school. And once upon a time, I, you know, it, it was an issue in Portsmouth. And, but I don't, I'm not sure that it is. But if we start, if we start and have it on that day, any teacher that, you know, objected, certainly would not penalize the teacher or any of the students. They would not be counted as, as absent. So that's, that's the back, I mean, that's the background. So it's the board's pleasure of what you'd like to do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think that will be an issue for Portsmouth, if you've seen the school system. But if, if, as you said, it was, it presented a problem for one of the teachers or students or their families, certainly, they could opt out. But I don't think it would have any effect on our instructional calendar that we have to vote on. That's my thought.
I agree. I mean, I, that's my, that's how I felt in, in talking with Dr. Bracy and Mr. Carroll. That was my personal belief. But we, we certainly would not penalize any teacher. Because I know when I was at the academy, I had several teachers of that faith. And they opted out. I just got a sub for that first day, that first day. And it just wasn't a problem. So thank you for bringing that to me.
Mr. Parent, can I ask a question?
Yes, I see your hand, yes.
Thank you, sir. And it's more for HR. So I believe Jessica's here somewhere in the Brady Bunch grid. Hey, Jessica, you're down there. Do we still offer religious leave as one of the options? So that teachers that do want to, or that will want to opt out, have that option as religious leave for their option for the day off? Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I needed.
All right. I'm flipping my screen. Anybody else raising their hands or want to? Okay. Since there's no more discussion, or members of, what is, I mean, you've already, we've already discussed it. So at this point, Kathy, roll call vote, please.
The motion.
The motion.
Oh, the motion.
Move for approval.
All right, Ms. Williams. And who seconded it?
Second.
Second.
All right. And seconded. All right. Do we have any more, any more discussion? Any, any other discussion?
Just real quick, one, one question. I know that last time when we were going to approve this schedule or this calendar piece, or there were some questions that had been brought up. In fact, I think it was Ms. Hines that had brought up with regards to some of this. First off, where those kinks worked out, that's one. And then secondly, and maybe this is more on a building level than anything else, but I know that in the past here, we have had staff, because of how the calendar was set up with regards to when grades were cut off, there, there seemed to have been this rush of not necessarily getting grades in with regards to just how the calendar was working out. And, I mean, again, that's probably more of a building issue.
Yes.
I don't know if that's something that's in consideration with this or not, so.
Ms. Hines?
Yes, sir.
Did you have any questions about that?
No. I have, I've reviewed the calendar, and we did add an early release date in March. And March is always my, the sticky point for staff and for students because it is such a long haul. The other question I had about the calendar was about a full day off the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And I understand why we can't, so I'm good with that. But I think everything else we discussed previously has been addressed and has been taken note in this calendar. So I would like to say thank you.
Ms., I thank you. Ms. Schumake, I see your hand.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm trying to see everyone. I apologize.
The nice thing about it is that we get, I mean, our staff gets two full weeks for the Christmas holidays. I, I think that's great.
Absolutely.
Very good. All right. Any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. Lamb.
Chairman Parent?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Did we move the HR case that was previously on the agenda back?
I believe, yes.
Okay. I just, I thought I was crazy. I was like, I know I originally seen it.
It was there, and then it was resolved, and that's the reason why it was removed.
Okay. All right.
Got it. All right. All right. Now we're ready to vote on the instructional calendar. Madam?
Mr. Parent, before you, before you leave to follow up with Ms. Atkinson's question, it, it hasn't been resolved. There's another step that, that needs to be done that the, that was requested. So that's why we removed it. So you very well could see it later.
Oh, okay. Did anybody hear that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Now we're ready, we're, we're ready to vote on this instructional calendar. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is the amended item in 4.3. It is the looking at the fiscal year 2020 budget. I'm going to ask Dr. Bracy. He sent out an email to us, and we got it a couple of days ago. You want to address this, sir?
Yeah. Mrs. Hines, you, you were asking about this year's budget. Is that correct? Not next year?
No, this year.
Right.
And in fact, I'll give you my two specific questions. And if you can speak to them, would you, would you like for me to do that? Or would you like to speak first?
No, go ahead. I mean, you know exactly what you want.
My first one was ADM calculations. Where are we with ADM calculations? Because that typically happens sometime around the end of March. How is that going to happen? And then number two, what is our projected loss of revenue from now until the end of June based on sales tax and all, everything that has to be taken into account? Because the, the email that you sent previous was talking about fiscal year 2021. But we still have to address any gaps that are going to happen between now and June 30. So my real question is, number one, ADM calculations, and number two, loss of revenue.
Okay. Mr. Fulk will address that.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
The ADM calculations, they are actually being done right now as we speak. I believe they're due sometime next week. I believe by the end of the month. They came across my desk this morning. Everybody that has to sign off on those are chiming in. We'll look at them and make sure that everything's in order. And they'll be in by the first of next week, if I'm not mistaken. And then your second question in regards to loss of revenue in 2020, we were on a conference call with the state superintendent this morning and some of the budget officers. The budget that was passed yesterday did not include any changes to the FY 1920 or what they call the caboose budget. So every piece of revenue that's in that budget should be coming to us, with the exception of sales tax, as you said. They cannot provide us any estimates on what the effect is going to be on sales tax. But we all know that we're going to have some effect on that, being that the state and the country has been shut down for about a month going forward. Normally, sales tax runs on a two-month lag. So the May collections will give us, let's see, March information. So we'll begin to see what the impact will be in May and June, and then beyond that. So, but the state hasn't given us any guidelines on what they think the impact is going to be. So what we're doing right now is looking at past history. We're looking at what's happened this year and trying to make the best estimate with nothing that we can really go on until we probably see some information in May. That first payment, the first payment we get in May will probably be a higher than the second payment in May. By then, we'll kind of have at least some understanding of what the cut will be. But the state, up to this point, hasn't given us any guidance. As a matter of fact, they're, they're basically going to go with a budget for FY 2021 with the old projection. And then it'll be contingent on us to look at those as well. So we're, we're looking at it. We're reviewing it. We're trying to make some projections, but there will be some impact. And as we get to that year-end funding and those calculations, we'll give you more information as to what we think that impact will be.
Okay.
And Ms. Hines, to tack on to what he was saying, Dr. Bracy and I signed a letter April the 17th to the Virginia Board of Education. It just says Portsmouth City Public Schools is requesting a waiver from their requirement that the length of the school term meet a minimum of 180 teaching days or 99 teaching hours as established in 22.1-98 of the Code of Virginia as a result of Governor Northman's March 13th, 2020 order to close K-12 schools, which was then extended through the end of the 2019-2020 academic year on March 23rd, 2020. Each school in Portsmouth City Public Schools is unable to meet the required teaching time. This letter is to serve as certification that both the division superintendent and the chairman of the local school board have considered options for making up missed teaching time for the 2019-2020 school year and determined that every reasonable effort was exhausted before requesting a waiver of the length of the school term requirement. So we have, we have sent that letter to the State Board of Education for their consideration to approve the waiver. So that, that, that just kind of adds on to that issue as well.
And let me add one of, one other piece to that. As you know, when we, when we get to the end of the year, we always have to turn in any unexpendable funds back to the city. Now, Dr. Patton and I had a conversation about a week ago, and she's aware that, that we're not, we're not in school, we're not operating, and there are going to be, there's probably going to be a larger surplus on our end. But she does understand, and that I shared with her, that one of the things that we're looking to do is to beef up our, our distance learning because we're looking at potentially summer and maybe beginning the fall with this platform. So those additional resources will go toward that. So right now, she's on board with any money that we have that we will ask for it to be put back so we can put it into technology, the devices, the hotspots, and the platform that we would use for digital learning. So that's something that, that we have out there because we know that there will be some, some money at the end of the year with us basically being shut down.
Okay. Any other, any other, any other discussion?
Chairman Parent?
Yes.
Just real quick there, before Dr. Bracy moves on there, real quick. You just said something about with regards to beefing up our distance learning through the summer and possibly in the fall. I've been hearing kind of ins and outs. I mean, no one knows. But I'm, I'm glad to hear you saying, Dr. Bracy, that we're at least looking at that there's a possibility that that could be. Are you, are we making this decision because there's something more to that? Or are we just banking on and planning on that there is a slim possibility that we could be moving into the fall with this format?
Well, that's something that we've been, we've been moving toward that as a division all along. You know, with the high school and now at the middle school, we have the devices for all students, but they just don't take them home. They stay in the schools. So for us being a true one-to-one division is something that, that we have in place. So this, what this, using these additional funds and then looking at the CARES Act funds that we have available to us, we want to make sure that we put this in place because as was stated with the state superintendent, he said that this, if we have this platform, this is something that we can use during snow days when we're, when we're out of school, so that won't, it won't count against us. We'll be able to use those days and not be penalized for it. So right now, the instructional team, along with the IT department, are working to put this in place. So we're being, it's, it's being proactive, but this was already part of our plan.
Chairman Parent, one follow-up if I can?
Sure.
Yeah. And this is just, not necessarily a question, but just more so of a statement. And I, and I, I hope that, you know, all on...
And I, I hope that, you know, all on board, both sides, city as well on this side, and I know on our side it is, but with those funds, I really hope that we can have a better relationship than what we've had in the past with Mr. Falk and with regards to ongoing issues that we've got, even with risk management and so forth, where this is all tied into question-answer summarizations and 177 pages of explanations. I really hope, Dr. Bracy, that at this time, with regards to this issue, that there is a mutual cooperation, that those funds will be allocated back, so that this could follow through, so that we're not stuck in having this conversation next December over something that we've got going on right here and right now.
Yeah. Well, it's good that Dr. Bracy and Dr. Patton have already discussed this, and she is well aware of it, so she's anticipating, and it's a good idea that the way that we're going to be able to use this money. Because, look, we don't know, we don't know if we're going to be able to start school in September. I mean, it depends on where we are, I guess, as a state, or what stage we might be in, and what decision the governor will make. So I guess what we, I guess what everybody's doing is we're taking this week by week and see how, I think we have to go, what, two weeks without any cases, and then hospitalization, and then you get to stage two, and then you get to stage three, and finally you get to stage four. I don't know if we'll be there. I don't know. You just don't know, Ted, where are we going to be in September? And we just have to wait and see. But in the event that we're not, you know, they're calling for another round in November, then we'll have technology in place that will, that will help, so. Okay. All right, any other discussion, Ms. Heinz? I know that you brought this up. Anybody else have any discussion concerning the 2020 budget? Hearing none. Dr. Bracy, before we do adjourn, I do want, you and I had an earlier conversation before this meeting, and we talked about graduation. And it's not on the calendar, but I'm just bringing it up for board comment, because my deep passion is that I want these kids, students, to have some kind of a graduation. And you and I have talked about that. You want to share with the board before we leave some of the ideas that you're having?
Yes. What we're doing, we have looked at some alternate dates in August. So we do have something penciled in. Dr. Camardi has been working with the folks over at Chartway, trying to look at some, look at some of those dates, see if the restrictions are lifted, what are the possibilities of getting in and getting on their calendar? So he's working, he's working on that from that angle. Also, he's going to be sitting in on a Region Two meeting of all the administrators that are involved with graduations, to get an idea of what are they doing across the region for graduation? What are some thoughts and ideas that some of the other school divisions are providing, are considering at this point? So we're going to keep you abreast of everything that we find out and everything that we're doing as it relates to that. We understand that the parents want something, you know, they lost the prom, they lost the senior trip, so graduation is one of the next things that's left on the table. They lost spring extracurricular activities. So all the things that you do in the spring as a senior, so that's gone. So anything that we can do to try to bring them some type of closure with graduation, you know, we're going to try to do that.
I think, I think that's just, I mean, I just think that's something that's important, because, you know, if you put it off way into August, a lot of kids are going to, going to school, and anyway, I'm glad that, I'm glad that you're, that's happening. I just want to remind the board that-
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
Yes. I just had a question for Dr. Bracy and his staff, as far as graduating seniors that need to talk with their guidance counselors or principals about their scholarships or anything. Has anything been set up that the kids know that they can, although school is closed, they can contact the guidance counselors or principals to find out exactly where they are or getting any help with scholarships, things like that? I did get a call about that, so I would like the viewing audience to know what can be done.
That's a good idea. Dr. Bracy, do you have any?
There's a, Dr. Camardi.
Oh, there's Dr. Camardi, okay.
Yes, sir. The answer, Ms. Williams, is yes, ma'am. The guidance directors at each of the three high schools have been accessible to students by email. We're still honoring transcript requests and letters of recommendation and things of that sort, so that's still going on. It's just that kids are having to contact the guidance directors, and then we have to send it to them electronically. Of course, the transcripts, we send to the school directly anyway, so, ma'am, we're still providing those services.
Okay, thank you.
And, hold on, on that second note, yes.
Chairman Parent, hey, I have a question. It's cool.
Oh, yes, sorry, I'm sorry, yes.
So this is to Dr. Bracy and staff as well. So I've been getting questions about senior dues. Do you know how that was?
I can't hear you. We couldn't hear you.
Okay, so I have a question regarding-
She was talking about senior dues, right?
Yes. So those are the questions that I've been getting from parents. So do we know how each high school allocated those funds, where they use for building rentals? Do we have a plan to refund that, or we don't as of right now?
I'm not aware. Dr. Camardi, has that come up in any of the meetings that you've had with the high school principals?
No, sir, not senior dues specifically. We have refunded money for senior trips. The annual trip that the Wilson students take to Florida, those parents were refunded those funds, but nothing on senior dues.
So what does the senior dues go towards?
Typically, the senior dues go toward, if there's a senior event at the end of the year, a breakfast or something like that, it's usually the junior proceeds that put on the senior prom, so it wouldn't have been anything like that. But it goes for events that the class may have, if they have a breakfast or some other occasion, usually that's what those dollars go toward. But prom is usually covered by the junior class for the seniors.
Okay. So as of right now, since we don't know when we're going to start, or if we're putting on a prom, we haven't discussed refunding anything as of yet, is that correct?
That is correct. In fact, that has not come up. I meet weekly with the high school principals, and I've made a note to bring that up when we get together next Wednesday morning to ask about senior dues. I don't even know if the schools collect senior dues, but I'll ask that question, Ms. Atkinson, and follow up with you or the entire board by email.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Camardi.
Yes, ma'am.
The other, tying in with that, is it's my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, and maybe Dr. Winn could answer this, is that for the grades for students, my understanding is it's going to be a pass/fail? Is that? No, you're shaking your head no?
We're actually sending out some information. Dr. Bracy will be sending out some information about the grades in his weekly announcements. Students will receive letter grades in elementary and in middle and high school, and we will also be assigning grades of satisfactory or outstanding for our K-2 students. Grades will reflect work that was done up through March 13th, and we will be averaging three grading periods instead of four. No student will fail unless they just haven't shown up for school, period. We're making every attempt to provide resources and support for students who were failing so that they can raise their grade to a passing grade.
Good, thank you. Any other, any other questions that we need to?
Ms. Allen.
I see Ms. Allen and-
Good evening.
And Mr. Lamb.
Just a quick question in regards to the guidance counselors and assisting our seniors with their college endeavors. Just a suggestion of a thought process of maybe a collaboration, whether it be virtual, virtual counseling hours where you do one school and you combine the guidance counselors through the division to assist students with some virtual hours, so that they can actually maybe Zoom, have a conversation with, have a Zoom conversation with their guidance counselor. Have a Zoom conversation with their guidance counselor, and maybe include the graduation coaches and that, and that way they can work together through the students from all three high schools. I haven't seen that done yet, and enforcement could like lead the way of, we're still moving forward of getting you the assistance you need to get into college, instead of the student having to reach out to the guidance counselor traditionally, maybe set up some virtual timeframes with guidance counselors and the graduation coaches that we do have.
That's a great suggestion, and we'll certainly pass that along to Ms. Slicky, and she can coordinate that. It's a great idea. We can, we do it for our classes, so I think it'll be a great way for us to provide support for folks that are trying to access career choices or college choices, so, thank you.
I would also, just as a suggestion, maybe reach out, if you're going to maybe do some Zoom options with maybe UNCF, Access College, maybe getting a Zoom session on where students can log in and hear what scholarship opportunities are still available for them and deadline information, because there are still scholarships being awarded at this time, that if we kind of loop in the communities, loop in the community that are already giving out, I know there's various agencies that are still doing that, so if we can maybe offer some Zoom lessons or some Zoom options, no one else is doing that. Enforcement could lead the way in that we're still providing major services to our seniors.
Thank you.
So we did start with Navias this year, and that's a product where kids have a login and they can go in and actually have access to available scholarships that match their academic profile. So it holds their historical grades, their Great Point average class rank, and all of that information's already there. It pulls it from Power School, and then Navias caters a list of scholarships for that individual student that he or she might be eligible for.
That's great.
And every student has access to that.
That's great.
All right, Mr. Lamb?
Just a couple of quick things here that just came up right before the meeting. For one, if, for students, especially in the elementary level, that are having, they've got their packets, be it some copy, hard copy, or even what they're doing online, and they're having a hard time to upload that, to get it turned in to their teachers, what's the best way to make contact if they are having difficulty doing that? That's one. And then, two, with regards to kindergarten enrollment, if someone's wanting to enroll their new student into school, how are we going about doing that? As well as if a student is transferring in and, or transferring out. As far as, like, let's just say, for example, we have a student coming from Norfolk that has to come and enroll into a high school here, how are we handling that? Because there's been some questions with that. And then the last one, which-
Vice versa, too.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It's both ways. And then the last part here is, of course, when everything has happened, this might have got pushed off to the side, or just give an update as well as with regards to next year's, the Churchland Elementary School situation with the zoning and so forth, so.
Well, I think I'll open Pandora's box, because I'm getting a little email from our attorney, I mean, only, so I think that-
We were supposed to talk-
Yes, anyway. To me, I wanted to make sure that, I mean, to me, there were critical questions that have been coming to me, and I think that we, it's somehow we needed to have some of the discussion. So our next meeting is going to be, of course, May 7 and May 21, and it will be exactly the way it is this evening. And we can only discuss those things, right, Mr. Carroll, that are-
Yeah, that's correct for now. There is a change that the governor approved for public bodies to be able to conduct more business in a broader scope, and I've got some language on that. I need to see if it was signed, I believe it was signed with budget, frankly. So it's brand new. I will look at that and send around what those parameters are, but it's designed to facilitate more business being able to be conducted. There are a few personal issues we need to jump through, but none of them look too onerous. So we should be able to have more broad-scope meetings in this format by the end of this month.
I mean, that came out, what, today or?
Today, yeah.
Today, yeah.
But I'll take a look at that, and I will send it around.
Very good. All right, the last item is adjournment, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
Ms. Williams adjourned and seconded by Ms. Allen, and-
Ms. Atkinson.
Atkinson, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please. Just check us all out.
Okay. Ms. Allen?
Yep.
Signing out.
Yes, signing out.
Mr. Barnes?
I am signing out.
Mrs. Heinz?
Yes, see you guys later.
Mr. Lamb?
Signing out.
Reverend Patillo?
Tillo out.
Ms. Schumate?
Be safe.
Ms. Williams?
Signing out and be safe.
Mr. Parent?
Same as Ms. Williams, signing out, be safe, and I will see you guys May 7. Take care.
Thanks.
Take care.
Bye, everybody.